Good morning, everybody. Good morning, everybody. Well, sorry for the little bit of a delay. As always, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for August 25, 2022, both in person and via Zoom. And as always, we'll start it off with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Actually, I forgot. I wanted to, if you could all stand for a moment. I wanted to have a moment of silence for Ralph Rowe, who is a longtime resident and volunteer here in town, was involved with many things, and he just passed away this week. So, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of June 23, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting for August 11, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Thank you. And finally, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of August 11, 2022?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camillo's a yes.
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone McWhiggin, yes.
Okay, thank you. Going on to the updates, I will start it off. We had the first meeting of the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities Land Use Subcommittee, which I subvise chair that. And I will report more on what's going on. We're going over possible legislation, and I certainly made our views here in Greenwich known on some of the proposals that are coming back again that we fought hard against last year. So I'll have more on that. But I did see some sliver of compromise there, which was very good. And I spoke with some of the other members of the committee after, and it was a good beginning. I made our case very, very clear, our position, but also that we were able, were willing and able to work with other municipalities wherever and whenever we can, where it doesn't have any unintended consequences for us or any other municipality. So there'll be more on that to come. Two nights ago, I did another ribbon cutting for Erica Chris. She has a new business over in Greenwich, over at Second Congregational Church. It's wellness and nutrition business. So we wish her a lot of luck, and she had a lot of people there. So I know she'll do really, really well. Earlier that day, I swore, or Monday, I swore in six new firefighters and promoted two to lieutenant. So as you've probably been reading, all around the country and here and in Greenwich, we're not immune to it. There's been a lot of retirements. And also, less and less people are taking the tests now for fire and police, especially police. So we're working hard on recruitment and also getting some transfers from other departments with experienced officers, which is very good. So Fire Department had a big day, and there'll be more to come with that. Ableist is having a fundraiser on, I believe, the 29th, Monday. It's at one of the Trump places in, not Bedminster, one, it's in Briar Cliff Manor. And it's to benefit Ableist. It's a golf tournament and then a dinner afterwards. So if anybody's interested, contact Ableist. There will be another new business ribbon cutting for Metro Mattress at 11 o'clock on August 3, which is next to Threads and Treads. So if you're around there, please stop by and wish them well. On Saturday, September 3, the Arcadia Lodge Annual Summer Picnic is going to be over, I believe, in Byram. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Ninth District Vets. So we'll hopefully see people there. And this week is the fireworks, or the 3rd. We're going to have two shows at Binny at 7:55, and then at Todd's at 8:25. And if there is rain, God forbid. Father, maybe you could help us with this. There would just be one show the following night. But so far, I think the radar looks good, so fingers crossed. And that's it for now. So I'll turn it over to Lauren. Good morning, Lauren.
Good morning, Fred. Good morning, Janet. Hi, everyone. So my update, just some of the things that I've been working on for the past two weeks. Actually, had the start of a demonstration for a product called Civic Clerk, which is part of our IT infrastructure that runs our website and some of the things that we do in town. They have a boards and commissions and committees module to help with things like agendas, minutes, et cetera. Actually, started to think about it for SNAC, Selectmen's Nomination Advisory Committee, where I'm the Board of Selectmen liaison. But it might have other applicability to other boards and commissions within town. I was acting for Selectmen last week, and I hope Fred had a really great vacation. Got several calls about noise, especially in residential areas with all the construction going on. So wanted to possibly, at a future meeting, take a look at our ordinance, the times where, you know, noise can be occurring. Certainly, since COVID, people are still working from home, so it's very disruptive in residential areas, especially with things like stone cutting, et cetera. In our ordinance, we also have a decibel level. So trying to understand, you know, if residents think that the decibels might be exceeding what the ordinance allows for, you know, what's the mechanism to report that? So, you know, more to come on that subject. Met with Greenwich Hospital, actually, this week, to see the new plan for the cancer center. So they have discussed how they have been outreach more to the neighbors. So if you are a neighbor of that area, they've been very open surveys, you know, collecting information about the neighborhood's thoughts on the new proposed building that they're coming forward with. And then finally, as part of the Central Middle School Building Committee, we're about to go out to RFP for an owner's rep and the architect. And that's my update.
Thanks, Lauren. Good morning, Janet.
Good morning, and thank you. Well, my update is the McWhiggin household is all about returning to school. I have two college-age sons, so my older son is already at school. Will be taking my younger son to school this weekend. Just a reminder to any families out there with college-age students to get your absentee, get them their absentee ballot applications before they leave. That makes everything easier if they plan to vote in Greenwich. And when we return on September 1, our public schools will be starting. And then the Tuesday after Labor Day, our private schools will be starting. So I just want to take the opportunity now to say thank you to all of our school administrators and teachers and families out there who support our students. Let's all think really good thoughts about COVID, because that will make, keeping this virus in control will make all the difference this school year. So thank you. And that's it from me.
Thank you, Janet. Okay. There is no old business, so we're going to go right into new business. And up first is the alternative route for the East Coast Greenway from Stanford through Greenwich and Riverside. And Mike's with us. Good morning, Mike and Jim. And I want to thank also the task force, the Bike Task Force for working on this in Pedal Greenwich.
For the record, just stick your names, please.
Hi, I'm Michael Kislak. I'm a traffic engineer with the Department of Public Works. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm here today with Deputy Commissioner Jim Michael. We are considering and want to request modification of the East Coast Greenway route through Riverside and Old Greenwich from the Myanis River to the Stanford Town border, border with the town and city. So the East Coast Greenway, for those that are not familiar, is a route from Maine to Florida. It's for non-motorized users. That's used as recreation, but also wayfinding connects points of interest, commuters, things like that. It designates the most, in many areas, like the easiest route, path of least resistance for cyclists, pedestrians, scooters, places like that. So a lot of the route, where possible, they like it to be off on protected pathways, things like that. And where not possible, it's on existing streets. So the East Coast Greenway Alliance is the nonprofit organization that kind of runs the route. They maintain a website of the entire route from Florida to Maine. And the route goes through Greenwich, from Portchester to Stanford, between the coast and US-1. So the portion that we're talking about today is in Riverside and in Old Greenwich, trying to find a modified route. The reason this came to us is because the city of Stanford is looking to change their route. So we want to modify ours so that they link up in the same place. You don't have discontinuity. So the existing East Coast Greenway alignment enters from Stanford on Brownhouse Road and continues to Sound Beach Avenue, through onto Lockwood, and then up, there's a connection on US-1 over to, over the river. So we, DPW, have worked with the Greenwich Bicycle Task Force and the Pedal Greenwich, the advocacy group, to consider alternative routes. And in, you know, in conjunction with realigning to meet with Stanford, wanted to consider, you know, what, where else can we improve and find a better, more accommodating, comfortable route? So what we're doing is purely just the routing, and there's not any physical improvements or anything associated with this. It's just the route itself. And then, once we've selected a new route, we'll, and got an approval from the Selectmen, we'll take that to the East Coast Greenway Alliance, and then they will ultimately review and decide if they want to move forward. And so we're trying to do that in step with Stanford. So we have considered three alternatives. And so, well, first I should mention that Stanford's route is being realigned to go south from where it enters on Brownhouse, to go down Fairfield Avenue, I believe it's Fairfield Avenue. And then it's going to enter in, on Shore Road in Greenwich. So all three of the route alternatives that we've considered start at that point so that they meet up. And then, so the routes, the three routes all start the same. They come down Shore Road, and then they turn right up on Sound Beach Avenue. And so of the three that we've considered, based on the outreach we've done and discussions, we've selected alternate three. You guys were sent in your packet the three routes. So I don't know if we want to, on the screen, go to the last page there. Yeah, we'll just focus on the preferred alternative. So. Okay, yeah, you can see it. See it there, yeah. Yep. I think, I think that's good. Yep. So the new route comes up shore, comes in on Shore Road, then comes up Sound Beach Avenue through the town center in Old Greenwich, which is one of the things that the East Coast Greenway Alliance likes, is destinations, things where people can stop and get a bite to eat and see, you know, get a feel for the town. And then it turns left, if you're going north, at the firehouse on West End Avenue, which, there's a, there's a traffic light there, so it's a protected movement for cyclists. And then it continues from there onto Riverside Avenue. And it's a fairly simple, you know, you stay on Riverside Avenue, then follow the curve up past the train station onto US-1. And so this results in less of a connection on US-1 as well. So it cuts down that, that, you know, easier route than traveling there. So we felt that of the alternatives we considered, this was the, you know, the lowest traffic volumes, lowest speeds, and the easiest terrain for people that are trying to navigate, because it's intended to be used, you know, by all, all users. So, and so I think that's it. That's all I had. Myself and Jim are available for questions, if you have any.
Sure, thanks, Michael. Yeah, the, while you were doing all three, you know, possibilities, you know, the three routes, did you get any input from the residents in those areas or not yet?
Yeah, so the Pedal Greenwich put out a questionnaire, and I'm not sure where everybody, it was kind of general public, so not necessarily just the residents in the area. But we saw the results of that. It was over 100 respondents, and 2/3, 67%, were in favor of alternate number three, which is the one that we're proposing here. So that was Pedal Greenwich's preferred route, and then also the respondents were overwhelmingly in favor of that.
Thank you. And do we envision putting any signage along these routes? Just to let people know that this is a actual bike route?
Yeah, the East Coast Greenway has a sign that, I don't know if you've seen, it's a rectangular sign with a, kind of like a blue and green, and has a tree that looks like an arrow on it. I don't have a picture of it here. But the wayfinding signage would be modified to match the route once it's approved by the organization. But just signage is really the only, the only physical change.
Thank you, yes. I, again, I want to thank Pedal Greenwich and the Bike Task Force, and some members that are here for their work here, and certainly Stanford, when we reached out to them to form an alliance there. And it's starting to build now. They've reached out to Darien and Norwalk, so, but we're, you know, focused here in Greenwich and Stanford. But it's the beginning of something here. And we know that, you know, we want to make sure that we do a lot of education with people just for safety's purposes, because we know that this isn't, you know, not an easy thing to do, right? It's not an off-trail hiking excursion. It's, you're sharing the road with motor vehicles. So we're really cognizant of that. But we'll do all we can to make sure we can get this up and running and in as safe a way as possible. So, thank you. Any questions?
Likewise, I want to thank everyone involved in this development. I had the pleasure of biking alternate route three with Bob D'Angelo and Vin DiMarco. I can therefore personally attest that this is a very biker-friendly route. If I can handle it, I think most bikers can. So, so, yeah. Again, thank you.
Who is the lead cyclist?
Not me.
Props to you, Janet. I'm not, I'm not a cyclist. I think everybody knows it, but I, I'm definitely down for the cause. I'm more of the walker. So I think this is even good for somebody that wants to walk the route as well. So thanks for the work that the team put in and getting the input. It's pretty clear what the differences are and that this is something that would work, you know, for the majority, whether you walk or cycle.
Thank you. Just a question. Last week, I did my first e-bike expedition. And they're great. I mean, you can obviously get some exercise, but also you could take off. How do you envision that? Because they can go pretty fast. And I suspect that you said motorized scooters would be included in this?
Yeah, I think the intent of the, so the East Coast Greenway's been around since longer than, you know, e-bikes and things have been, become popular in the last couple of years. But I think technically, battery-powered bikes and scooters are kind of in that same, same category. I think on, in a lot of cases, it'll actually make it easier for people to keep up with traffic. You know, the speed limit on West End and Riverside is 25 miles an hour. So most e-bikes will be able to kind of, you know, if not go to 25, but will able to, you know, maintain closer to that speed limit. So there's less of a conflict with drivers trying to pass and things like that. Then going up hills, it also does, you know, it helps you maintain that speed rather than as big of a differential. But, you know, I think it's important that everybody's aware of the rules, rules of the road, if they're going to be using something like that, because it's, presents conflicts with pedestrians and things like that if they're moving faster on sidewalks and through intersections, so.
Yeah, and I noticed that, that it was, when you're on a bike path and then on the road, very different. But they're, they're great. And if, I mean, I'd love to see more people doing it, because it's less gas and, you know, you can get there pretty quickly. Right, Jim?
Yeah. Jim Michael, Deputy Commissioner, Public Works. I just wanted to say, I do know that that is something that the Police Department has started to address, a lot of the rules of the road. I think they had a social media post or stuff like that in the last couple of weeks about making people aware of what their responsibilities are, what the laws are related to that. So as we see more of this, we're going to continue to work with the Police Department and so forth to address these things. We're always, you know, looking in Public Works to make sure we're serving the population and how the population is using our roadway. So just, you know, I just recommend people, if they are going to endeavor down that pathway, to make sure they understand what the rules of the road are and that they are using, you know, helmets and so forth for their own safety. So, thank you.
That's a great point. Helmets, and also with more and more, you know, Teslas on the road, and Ford Motor Company just announced that by 2030, half of their fleet will be electric. You don't hear them as much as you do gasoline-powered vehicles. So, you know, I think we're just going to have to keep promoting it and educating it and just may have to, you know, fine-tune some, some rules and regs and ordinances. But I think it's going in that direction as the years pass. So you'll see probably more, we'll see more e-bikes and more electric vehicles. So it does, it's great, but it also presents a challenge to them. Any other questions?
Yeah, honestly, whoever was biking by me when I pulled out McDonald's yesterday afternoon ran the red light.
Hopefully, the chief's listening. Okay. But no, thank you. This is great, and just keep us updated on, you know, on your progress. And we're, I think we're all very supportive of this.
Just, just a process question. Do we need to vote on this?
Did you want?
Yeah, so, so we do need an endorsement from the board as the legal traffic authority for this, for us to work with the East Coast Greenway Alliance to modify this route. So it's not an official certification or anything that we're doing. It's just working, you know, endorsing us to move forward with, yes, alternative three is the route we want to go and go from there.
Sense of the board, okay. All right. Is there a motion on the floor?
Do we want to do, give time for the public to weigh in?
Yeah, I, yeah. I mean, either way, certainly. I don't know if there's anybody against, but I see Bobby here, and, oh, there's this. Thank you. So first up is Kevin O'Connor from Central Greenwich. Oh, there he is. Hiding back there. How you doing, Kevin?
Good morning, select people, women, persons. I don't know if this, this could fall under old news or old. It's about the parking down on Arch Street. Do you want me to hold off on that?
Yeah, that was, that was restored, right? That was restored.
Well, no, it wasn't. That's the problem.
For public comment?
For public comment.
Yeah, we're not going to be, I don't think we're going to be very long, so we'll get to that.
Okay, I'll just wait till public.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Bobby D'Angelo.
No, you, you, my wife could sign up, not me.
Oh. It says Jan. Again, I am, my first eye surgery is September 20, so maybe in November I'll be able to read. Sorry, Jan.
Okay, I'm Jan D'Angelo, and I just want to thank you for being interested in this East Coast Greenway. And I know if you all approve it or endorse it, or whatever the term is, it's really up to the Greenway to formalize the route. But I, I would not be against having additional signage, because Riverside and Old Greenwich, they're a place where even children are on their bikes. And it's great to see, and I think parents all over want their kids to be on bikes. So if we can have signage to remind people just where the route is and to share the road, and, because it's near two, three schools and also our parks. So it would be great if people felt really good about being on the road and being able to transport themselves to these places on bikes. So, and I'm, like you, Lauren, I'm more, I really am a proponent of cycling, but I feel more comfortable walking or hiking. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jan. And I agree, I'm a hiker too, but trying to take a bike a little bit more. Anybody else? I don't see signing up. All right, thank you. Yeah, this is a, this is good. Yeah, you got, did you sign up? All right. All right, people, if anybody wants to speak, please sign up, because, Peter, go ahead. You can speak. But just, I swear, we, we have a lot of people here. We're.
Hi, Peter Alexander. Thank you, selects, once again. The only chance I had at making the Olympic ski team was biking in Greenwich, up Riversville Road and stuff. But I want to make sure everyone's aware that the state now says we can go down as low as 10 miles an hour in the local communities for speed limits. And I think to help this project, we should consider that with a signage. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. That was a bill that was passed a couple of years ago, and I'm glad you brought it up. God bless you. The, there was some concern if we did that, about, speaking with the Police Department, I think with DPW, that when you lower the, you start to get, they take average speeds. And if, if, there was, I think, concern about lawsuits because of speeds changing. I guess when you do, this has been like two years now. So if you could refresh my memory, Jim, if you lower the, they take the average speed, and if it's, you fool around with that speed limit, right? The, they'll take the average speed on something. That's what I think it was, or the bill said you could.
So they introduced a bill, approved a bill that slightly changed the speed limit laws. One of the things was that if the community has to determine whether or not they are going to take over all jurisdiction and legal responsibility for speed limits, or whether they were still going to consult with the State Office of Traffic Administration. And most municipalities, I would say probably 97% of them, if not more than that, have still remained utilizing the offices of State Traffic Authority, because it's very beneficial to us to get that second set of eyes when we look at these. So anytime we submit a speed limit, it has to go through your board, but also through the state office before they get approved. In addition, there was some movement on what the minimum speed is, but there is a significant hurdle to get over with a traffic study and so forth in order to get it down lower than 25. So, so it's, there needs to be a significant amount of information proven that requires it, such as, you know, road widths, slopes, et cetera, that pretty much anything we've tried to look at in some of these areas. And I, you know, we haven't fully studied this route, but I would have a very, very difficult time thinking this route would qualify for those, within those parameters that they would meet, to go below the 25 speed limit, so.
Thanks for the clarification. I do remember the study being a part of it, but I know there was concern that if the study came back something a little bit different, the town would be in a difficult spot. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Peter. Okay.
So, so thank you. We'll take a vote at our next meeting. I plan to endorse, but just as a, as a practical.
Is, is there, is there a time urgency on this? Because if there is, I think we could, could endorse now if there was something.
I don't think there's, you know, I don't think there's a specific time urgency on it. I think we have time to wait for the two weeks for.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. As a, as a best practice, I like having to read so that we can allow for public input.
Okay, yeah, as long as there's no, it's not time-sensitive. Thank you. Appreciate that. So next up, we have a discussion on handhandling in town. And I want to thank Barbara Heinz for lots of research this week. So I'll turn it over to Barbara.
Okay, Barbara Heinz, good morning, everybody. The Office of the First Selectman has been receiving several complaints via email, in person, and via tele. receiving several complaints via email, in person, and via telephone from residents who are concerned about the panhandlers they are encountering at various points in town, exit five entrance and exit ramps in Riverside. Also, there have been reports of panhandlers at exit two and also at exit three. Some of them are very passive in their approach to panhandling, in which they are just standing there with their hands out or with their cups out. Others are a little more aggressive in terms of approaching drivers and interrupting traffic flow. So we have been in contact with Human Services when we do receive these reports from residents. And Human Services has on multiple occasions sent caseworkers out to exit five specifically to render services and offer services to those who are panhandling. Unfortunately, it seems as though those offers of assistance are being ignored. Appointments may be made at times to come into Human Services, but then they break them. They do not show up for those appointments. So I have been researching various ordinances. There's been discussion on whether we can impose an ordinance, whether we should install signs, such as the way the city of Stanford has done. In, in looking at the signs that Stanford has, has installed, they say panhandling is unsafe and it gives instructions for people to donate their money via, by going through the Stanford website, which has links to various organizations, social service and human service organizations. And the advice it's given to panhandlers is to call nine, 211, rather, and/or to go to the city website. That's assuming that they have access to the internet. The effectiveness of these signs is not known at this point. I've reached out to the city of Stanford and have yet to receive any information from them. My other research is that there are at least a dozen cities and towns throughout the city, the state of Connecticut that have enacted ordinances. And they are very much, almost mirroring one another in terms of the template, the formatting of the wording of the ordinances. The fines, basically there are citations issued with fines ranging from approximately $50 up to $250 per offense. And then the effect of, what, what needs to be decided is, do you want to approach this with installing signs and deciding where you would like to locate the signs? And if it's in a state DOT right of way, I'm not sure what the, the process is for that. I believe we would need to obtain state DOT permission to install signs along exit ramps. Jim, I'm not sure if that is correct.
Sorry.
DOT right of way for signage, we would need permission from the state DOT, correct? And that is a long involved process. So that is an option, but then again, that's going to allow the situations of panhandling to continue. The other option is obviously an ordinance which would need to be drafted via law and then come through this board and ultimately the RTM. So that's my presentation to you for the discussion to open it up. And you have copies of each municipality's ordinance, ranging from Rocky Hill and Stonington to Norwalk, New Britain, New Milford. It's, it's varied. It's not concentrated geographically. It's, it's literally across the state.
Thank you so much, Barb. This is very helpful. There would be state approval also for any signage along the Post Road, which is where we're seeing a lot of this. Just a point of clarification, there are, there've been a lot of calls in about possible scams going on out there. And there may be something to that. The police department is now investigating that. So putting that aside, this is, we're, we're going to address those who may not be involved in a scam that are just out there. And I would urge people to, as hard as it is not to give money, the problem is the more you do that, the more they will stay there. And I don't know if you saw, they came down when we did the promotions the other day, News 12 came down. I thought they were there for the fire promotions, but they were there for this. And they interviewed me. And then I happened to see it that night and they went to Stanford and interviewed a panhandler. And he said he supports the ordinance. He wants us to do it for his own protection because he said he got, he was in the streets in 2020 and police pulled him over and gave him a ticket because, and he said he paid it. And he said, just yesterday, when he was speaking, that there were a couple of people right in the middle of the road in Stanford. And he was, you know, acknowledging that there has to be some type of ordinance for protection of everybody. But that being said, the person who was interviewing me spoke with somebody, I don't know if it was Stanford or Norwalk. And there, that person said that they make sometimes like 2,500 a week. So people have been there. Human Services has been down there, as Barbara said, to offer help and it's usually not accepted. Sometimes they walk away. And we know, in fact, some people have actually offered, stopped and offered jobs and they were also rejected. So my point is, if you give money, it may, it may not be solving the problem, the underlying problem there. Because we want them to be off the streets, safe and secure, and, and making money in a, in a, in a, in a way that's not going to put them in danger and, and make an honest living. And, and also to get some help. Sometimes there may be a little bit of mental illness in some cases, or maybe a, a drug addiction problem in some cases, or alcohol. So please be careful about giving, because we see people right in front of me on the Post Road are stopping and giving money. And they're going to be there. As long as you do that, they'll be there. So I, I definitely am in favor of an, of an ordinance that does not violate anybody's constitutional rights to be out there. Would have to be tailored narrowly, but also with the best interest, not only of the general public, but of the actual panhandlers themselves. Discussion?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to have a discussion about this because as concerning as the panhandling is, it's also a complex issue. And I'll just remind our audience, you know, FOIA does not allow the three of us to have a, a conversation about this, other than in a public meeting. So this is really, really helpful. I, I will say, well, I'll agree with you that the answer, as painful as it is for people who care, the answer is not to give money. I think, I think, I'll elaborate, though, I'll say that what we need to do is support our social services organizations and then direct people to those organizations. I am also, though, concerned, it's not just for the safety and the health, because there's an awful lot of car exhaust that our panhandlers are inhaling. I'm, I am also concerned that maybe some of these women are being exploited. And so, you know, that, to me, that is as much of a concern as the panhandling.
That's a good point. When I was in the legislature, there was a panhandler in Riverside with a young kid and a person brought it to my attention. So I, I looked around and to see if there was any way we could address it legislatively. And I think there was a bill in New York. I don't know if it ever passed. So I put the bill in and up for discussion, but there was a lot of concern about that, about being able to do that. So the bill didn't even get a public hearing. And I don't even know if New York's passed, but they did have a bill out too about that. And it was just to, they were concerned about, for example, with that ordinance that did not, that prohibited somebody from panhandling with a young child, would that affect the Girl Scouts, right, when they go door to door? And so you could see, they were bringing up all types of possibilities where you don't, it'd be an unintended consequence. So people, and then we ran out of time that year and then it, it didn't, I don't think it ever happened again. But these things do occur and I, and I agree with Janet, it's, it's concerning when you see it.
Yeah, I was going to just say, not only exploiting women, but, you know, I've seen more of the exploiting children and putting them in the position. And, you know, most people are going to respond when they see a child like sort of in need. So I, I agree. And, you know, whatever we do, we need to do it compassionately. It concerns me that if we are offering help, like I, I would imagine, you know, saying, yeah, come back to Human Services, like, do we have something that we can hand out that's a little bit more actionable, you know, rather than setting, trying to set up a meeting or, you know, something like that, you know, something that's actionable, whether that's a pamphlet. I don't know if anybody could go on the internet. So I think more of a handout when, when we do see people in need.
Yeah, I, I agree. It's, it could be heartbreaking and it, it tugs at you not to give anything. But, you know, I think, I think we have to do the right thing overall and that's not addressing the problem, unfortunately. So.
Right. I do believe that Human Services has what they call a green card that they, that they hand out. And I think it's a good point about, you know, how do we distinguish between panhandlers and, I'll, I'll call them the bucket brigades, the, the athletic booster clubs that, that go about asking for, for donations, which I'm all about because we don't want our kids going from door to door. So, you know, I think we want to make a distinction. And I, and I wouldn't want to see an ordinance that would, that would put us in any possibility of violating someone's First Amendment right. So, like I said, this is complicated.
It certainly is. So I think what we'll do is, we'll go to public comments, see if anybody would like to weigh in on it. But I think we're going to look with our town attorney, Barbara, we'll look at these other ordinances and see if there's something that we can get out there that's not only having an ordinance in place, but also, to my colleague's point, maybe stepping up a little bit to see about, you know, any way of expanding the help or making it more enticing for them to do that. But the end of the day, no matter what we give them or ask of them or offer them, they will continue to come back if they're making money there. That's, that's the, really the, at the heart of it is if people stop giving money, they won't go there. But we want to make sure that we, we couple that with the, the education for people who are out there that there is a better way. So, but we'll circle back on that. All right, thank you. So I don't see any, so we'll go to the public comment on that and any other issue. So Kevin, you want to come up, start us up?
How am I doing?
Is it green?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I'm here because of the parking, once again.
Kevin O'Connor.
Down, Kevin O'Connor, I'm sorry. Down at Arch Street in front of the harbor. We had a meeting, I guess back in June, and we had decided to take the parking out. I spoke with Gabrielle Kohi and she contacted Signs and Lines to take out the parking spaces, to blacken them out. What they did was they left the diagonals. So when you're driving there, it looks like you can park there. Plus, the sign is gone. That said 15-minute drop-off only. That's gone. All summer, there have been people parking there. Every day, there's somebody that parks there. What's happening is, the town is losing money because they're not paying to go in the Island Beach Boat parking lot. So you're losing money there. Then the cars are parked there for free. And there's no enforcement. So you're losing out on tickets. So you're losing on both ends of the deal. Okay? I've seen people get out of their cars and go to LaScalle, go to the Island Beach Boat, walk to the train station, go to the concert. You know, they just park. I mean, for the last 60 years, everybody pulled into the Island Beach Boat parking lot and unloaded and walked across the street. But now people are unloading and they're staying there. They, they just leave. So the town's losing money for parking and also for enforcement. Because the first thing they're going to say is, there was no sign that says you can't park here. That's what they're going to say, if they get a ticket. But they haven't gotten a ticket. There's been no enforcement.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll reach out to DC Gray.
Yeah.
And we'll talk about, thank you, because I haven't heard that.
Yeah. I mean, Gabrielle has said there is an ordinance, you cannot park on either side of Arch Street, period. But they are.
Okay. Well, that's good, that's good to know. Thank you.
And while I have you on parking, about six months ago, I put in for no parking sign on Orchard Place and Indian Harbor, where it intersects. The town did a fantastic job on Indian Harbor Drive. They gave the town 18 parking places that you can park and go into the playground, or people that live across the street. It's fantastic. One of the best projects I've seen. For some reason, 20 yards away, they decided to park on Orchard Place on the hill. That all used to be grass. Now it's all mud. And when it rains, you have a river of mud going down into Indian Harbor. I've documented it, photos, I've sent out emails, I've been contacted by Parking Services, the fellow from DPW Engineering. And he all said, yeah, yeah, we got to stick a sign in there, no parking. I said, that's all it takes. One little sign, no parking.
In a corner of Orchard.
No, what happens if you come off Indian Harbor onto Orchard Place? The cars don't park all the ways on the shoulder. They're half on the road, half on the shoulder. Then the cars coming down, they park right near.
Are you talking about when you're going up Orchard Place from Indian Harbor, the side of the road that's next to Indian Chase?
Exactly, Indian Harbor.
Indian Harbor, yeah.
Yeah, that's right. That's strip right there. But they're also coming down the hill and parking right in front of the stop sign. So basically, you're left with a cow path when you come around that corner. And there's a lot of women that are taking their kids to the playground. There's people walking there, dogs, people jogging. You come around that corner and you're wedged in. I mean, it's a dangerous situation. And I, I just don't know why nothing's been done. I mean, I've been patient enough, and it's not me, it's people on, on the street that are asking, why are they parking there when 20 yards away, you've got 18 parking places? It's just, and it's New York plates mostly, but Connecticut plates also.
Okay.
So it's just something I wanted to throw out.
Oh, absolutely. No, I will reach out to DC Gray.
Also Gabrielle said that she was going to contact Signs and Lines and DPW and make sure that the rest of those lines on Arch Street are taken out. And a no parking anytime sign would help. Okay? Thanks very much.
Thank, thank you, Kevin. Much appreciated. Anybody else? Comment? I also want to acknowledge Father Mac in the back of St. Rocks, who has been offering, I think, to help with some of the situation with the homeless and, and the, the panhandling issue. So St. Rocks Church is again at the forefront. So thank you, Father. Appreciate it. Did you want to say anything or?
I've not signed up.
Yes.
Father, please come in next. It's already green. Carl McIntosh, pastor of St. Rock Church. And we had a situation also at the, at the church with the, with a woman with her child and a man and a sign. I believe that these are the same ones who have been seen at exit five and exit two. And I did not see them myself. It happened just before the 12 o'clock mass, which is our mass in Spanish. And some of the, the parishioners came up to me and said, you know, Father, we, we have, we have a situation out on the, on the steps. So I went to see what was happening. They were no longer there. They were across the street at the Hamilton Avenue School in the parking lot, which is where everyone parks on Sunday to, to come to mass. So they had, they had left because my, my parishioners had, had chased them away and had threatened to, to call the police. And apparently there was a confrontation and they were screaming back, they were screaming back and saying, call the police, you know, we're, we're allowed to be here. And they, as I we're, we're allowed to be here. And they, as I said, when I got there, they were across the street. And that was no longer my property. I said, come back inside, mass is going on. I did bring it to the chief's attention, and he asked me that if it occurred, again, that I should bring it to his attention and call 911. So I just wanted you to know that it, it, it does occur in, in places other than the, than the exits. It's, the church steps are an easy mark. I'm proud to say that we have our church doors open all day to invite people to come in, but it's to invite people to come in to pray and not to, not to panhandle. And that's it.
Thank you. That's good to know that, you know, the department's on top of it. So thank you for, for sharing that. Next stop. Okay, is there any, any other comments? Okay, seeing none? Is there a motion to-
I have an appointment.
Oh.
So Lauren Raven-
I skipped that up there, sorry.
No, that's okay. Lauren Raven, I motion that we nominate Robert Chaney to serve on the Julian Curtis School Building Committee.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camilloza, yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Okay, that is it. Is there a motion to, for adjournment?
Lauren Raven, so moved.
Janet Stone-McWigan, I second.
All those in favor, Fred Camilloza, yes?
Lauren Raven, yes.
Janet Stone-McWigan, yes.
Thanks, Barb. Thanks, Jenny. Thanks, everybody in the back room. And thanks, everybody for attending. And we'll get working on that, KO. Thank you. And we'll circle back on the bike task.